Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, October the eighth, two thousand nineteen. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Velka? White?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Would you please join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one is agenda received as proposed or amended. I'd like to remove three C one off the consent agenda.
For, to delay it, or?
Uh, just remove it completely. We have more time to talk about it, or, yeah. Everybody get that, three C one under the consent.
Second.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item two is public comments. Is there anybody like to speak to the board at this time that is not an agenda item? Please state your name and address. Come up to the podium, please. Morning.
My name is Dwayne Ayers, twelve oh five and a half Bishop Street. I was here a year ago and talked to you about the taxes on property at twenty-two sixty-five Independence Avenue. It always was a house and a garage, and it was switched over by the county to commercial. The taxes went from one thousand seventy-seven dollars to three thousand seven hundred and some dollars. The house has been sitting empty ever since the police raided my home and found a sixteen-year-old boy with two cigarettes, marijuana cigarettes. The police tore it all the hell. It's been empty as a house. The taxes went from one thousand to almost four thousand. The home was hit in that storm and the roof was tore off of it. It's totally worthless now. I looked at the property next door, thirty-five mini warehouses sitting next door. The taxes on thirty-five mini warehouses are two thousand one hundred dollars. This house and garage sitting on the other corner next to it is almost four thousand dollars. I went next door to the many warehouses, and there's a big house with two, almost two acres, run as commercial, big crucial, commercial machinery all over the place. Taxes on that are one thousand one hundred dollars. There's something wrong. I've talked with the gentleman over there. He said, oh, well, your taxes will be reduced. Do you see anything wrong with my property at almost four thousand? Thirty-five mini warehouses next to me are two thousand one hundred. A commercial building next to that is one thousand, one thousand twenty-four dollars. My taxes went from, uh, uh, two thousand seventeen, from eleven hundred to twenty-five hundred, and this year it went up to thirty-seven, almost thirty-eight hundred. I don't know who goes out and assesses those properties and why my property on my corner is any different than anything else. Matter of fact, it should be way less than, than thirty-five mini warehouses next door, which I used to own many, many years ago. Your taxes will be reduced, is what he says.
You've talked to him recently?
Yes. So, same thing I said last time, and you told me, go talk to him, last time.
To the assessor, yes.
Who assesses my property for almost four thousand dollars in taxes with an old house that's not livable and a garage? Versus the neighbor's thirty-five mini warehouses at two thousand one hundred, commercial property next to it with big machinery all over it, and a big sign says industrial property right out front for sale, and his is a thousand, uh, twenty-four dollars. Has anybody got an answer to that, or something?
You're under public comments lab right now. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the board, but not to have any dialect with the board. I suggest that if you want to carry this further, you can wait after the meeting, and I'm sure any supervisor up here would meet with you.
One other different subject. Any of you been out to the county home since you gave it away?
We didn't give it away.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that word. Reduced it away, or whatever.
We sold it.
Sold it away. Property, the lawns are not cut. Patients that I talk to aren't being fed on time. They don't have their clothes on time, and I personally talk to them. The machinery out there is breaking down. They're short of help. They're not getting what's supposed to be done. And as I mentioned once before, we've been connected to the mobile, to the county home since I was a kid. I walked in the back door and ate when I was six years old because we didn't have anything else to eat, and they gladly helped us. So, my family's been connected to them for almost the old wooden home out, out on Hall Street. But it's not being taken care of right. Also, there's been a person out there that got fired for taking pictures of dirty food on the floor all over where it's not supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else like to speak to the board at this time? Please state your name, address. Good morning.
Good morning.
Charles Pearson, seventeen fifty Flower Street, Waterloo, Iowa. My name is Charles Pearson. I'm the project coordinator for the State's Iowa Civil Rights Trail Program. The past two years, I've been working with the city of Waterloo, and we've basically been doing an inventory of properties, sites, and landmarks associated with civil war and civil rights with the city. Um, just recently, I'll let y'all end it. But, uh, just recently, I had an opportunity to work with Buchanan County, and what was unique about Buchanan County, they had one of the first African-American wildlife heritage areas developed. And one of the problems that the county was having, they didn't have enough African-Americans in their county to be part of the actual program that they wanted to start. So, they reached out to me, and they wanted to know if they can include, uh, the Roberts family on the Iowa Civil Rights Trail. I said absolutely, and so then we started looking at regional-wise. Blackhawk County is the only county in our region that doesn't really have an African-American historical resource. And so, we saw a great opportunity in Cedar Falls. They have a place called Big Woods Lake, but, uh, the very first African-American settler, they just discovered where he lived at, and so we felt like that might be a starting point for the county to at least have one-story inventory, uh, when it comes to Blackhawk County. So, if we go to Fayette County or other counties, we'd be part of that program. The other thing that we was looking at was, the Iowa Civil Rights Trail is not like a, a lot of people thought it was an African-American heritage trail, but really, it's a trail system of civil resources. So, when it comes to civil, cultural, or historical resources, that's that inventory. In the city of Waterloo, we included the city hall. We included the Carnegie Library. We included, uh, Washington Park, where Martin Luther King's first visit to Iowa. So, it's a lot of civil resources that the city owned that we thought could be included on the Iowa Civil Rights Trail, and now we're looking at Blackhawk County. I think the big one for us is two things. The first one is Veterans Memorial Hall. Veterans Memorial Hall was actually built by the Grand Army of the Republic. Grand Army of the Republic was those members, that was those veterans that actually fought in America's only civil war. One of the veterans that fought for Blackhawk County, his last name was Butler. I still gotta remember what his first name was. But Mr. Butler was the only African-American that represented Blackhawk County. Because Governor Kirkwood allowed counties just to have one black represent that whole county. So, this gentleman Butler, not only they think he was the one and only black that represented Blackhawk County, he was the first black settler also in Blackhawk County. So, it's like two pieces of that. The part that we still having a problem with was the Veterans Memorial Hall was never open. So, when we was doing our tours this summer, we included Veterans Memorial Hall. We added the city's River Loop piece, Vietnam Plaza. We added all these pieces there, but all the tourists that came to visit Veterans Memorial Hall couldn't get in. The doors was locked. And what we didn't understand was, the hall was actually built by actually members of the Grand Army of the Republic from Blackhawk County, and the purpose was to have a museum to educate the public about the significance of civil war veterans and any other veterans from Blackhawk County. So, one of our goals was to see if we could actually, uh, come up with a strategic plan to add two to three county civil war or civil rights sites to the Iowa Civil Rights Trail, and then also maybe pay a great tribute to Mr. Butler, because if, well, it's two things. If Mr. Butler wouldn't have signed up to enlist in the civil war, we wouldn't have met our quota when it came to the colored infantry. Two, when it comes to Blackhawk County, if it wasn't for Abraham Lincoln at the same time, we wouldn't probably even be here, because in eighteen sixty-one, when the civil war started, Lincoln allowed Blackhawk County to have railroad. And when you look at the history of railroad, that was a driving force for our county. So, that's another piece that we think, when it comes to Lincoln Park, that we could educate the public about Abraham Lincoln, industrialization, and how, how important it was to the city of Waterloo to have the county to have rail here. Any questions? Mr. Burke, how you feel about that?
Well, that's, uh, I don't, I don't give an opinion on those matters, sir. It's the board.
Well, no, no, it's not a matter. It's just educating the public about the significance of people that were veterans from Blackhawk County, and they have a facility that was built for that purpose. That's why I was asking how you feel about that.
I'm sorry, sir, that, the board is the one.
How you feel about it, Mr. Little?
Oh, I, I think it's great. I would suggest that you go talk to our Blackhawk County Conservation Board.
We already did. They already on board. I think that, I think the big one is, is that this is the first, actually, this is the first step to working with the county. I mean, I've talked to Mr. White a few times, actually, so it's not like a, it's like new. But for the county, I think the other part is, you don't really have African-Americans on the board. And you, I'm not sure how many African-Americans is even associated with the county. So, it's gonna be like a, a great test to show the diversity of the board and minorities is trying to educate the public about our city and communities, other veterans and people that contribute to the county.
So, Charles, how do we follow up with you?
I'll go through your landing, 'cause, 'cause this is my first time, like, with the county piece, but, or I'll email everybody. I'll email you guys. I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen. November fifteenth, we partnered with Hawkeye Community College. It's the sixtieth anniversary of Martin Luther King's first visit to the state of Iowa, and it just so happened his visit was Waterloo, Iowa. What we're basically doing is, everybody that has a piece in educating people about Blackhawk County or Waterloo, Iowa, November fifteenth, I would advise you guys just to come check it out. We're asking, uh, the Cedar Valley Alliance, the John, matter of fact, I should have said something before that, the John Deere Museum. We had a big bone with John Deere's because when it came to the history of industrialization, you had eight blacks that used to be super, the, the very first black supervisors for John Deere's came out of Waterloo's Foundry, right? But the problem was, they were asked to be on the board to help raise money to build the John Deere Museum. And the crazy part was, they thought they was gonna see themselves in the museum. That's why I put that there. So, when it comes to county, I think the county has a responsibility, just like the community, to educate people about the whole story and not part of the story. Okay, I think I'm.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else like to speak to the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to claims and payments.
All right, so, we actually had quite a few checks, uh, this week. Check total came out to five hundred ninety-eight thousand, five twenty-nine fourteen. Looks like the big-ticket items, um, for Engineer's Office, the yearly SEAL, um, COE project came in at a hundred and sixty thousand, two ninety-one, uh, and then we had a few, uh, checks for Rock, one for fifty thousand, one for thirty-two thousand. The second payment for the Gilbertville shop came through at ninety-five thousand. We had a check for our audit services for thirteen thousand five hundred. The, uh, few had, few checks for the health department, uh, and then, uh, the other, the other big one was, um, IT, uh, the check to transfer for the treasures department for us to, uh, dockware upgrade, so. But other than that, they all looked, they all look good, so.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on the, um, resolution? Okay, roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item four is receiving project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I'm pleased to tell you that Cedar Ropsie Road did open yesterday morning, and this, again, is the section between Highway two eighteen and Highway sixty-three. So, uh, that's finished. It looks very nice. We have six-inch pavement markings on, which is new to the county system here. And then we have continuous rumble strips along, uh, both, both, uh, both of the outside lanes, both directions of travel. So, I'd urge you to drive that road and, um, see how much better it looks today. And then lastly, uh, we will be getting our last repair, those repairs I told you about earlier this spring and summer due to the bad frost oil condition throughout the county. The Simons Road, that large frost oil, our contractor, Grant Schmitz, they will be moving in, we believe, Monday, weather permitting. We'll close Simons Road just for two or three days, and then Simons Road, if you're not familiar with that, is north of Dunkerton Road, so it's, uh, north of the airport area. Does get quite a bit of traffic, over three hundred cars a day, so we'll be closing that down for just two or three days while they do that repair. Can I answer any questions?
I guess I was out at Rogers Market yesterday picking up straw bales and corn shucks for my fall display, and even in my junky old van, it was a nice smooth ride on Cedar Ropsie Road, so.
Thanks, Kathy.
Hey, Kim.
I'm Kim Veeder, IT Director. I just wanted to remind the public in the county that October is Cyber Security Awareness Month, and so I, um, will be sending out some extra emails about cybersecurity. The one that went out today talks about your personal, um, computer use as well. And so, I would encourage the public to rethink about their passwords, to make sure that they are, um, harder to, to, um, crack or whatever, and then to make sure they don't use the same password for multiple accounts, so, anyway.
You have something on our website?
Um, I can do that, but yes, I did get this information from the Iowa Department of Revenue that I sent out today to departments, so, okay?
Very good, thank you. Okay, well, we got everybody wants to talk today.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Yolanda Lovelace, the, uh, Director, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. It's been about six months since you guys elected me until they allowed me to come into this role. And so, I just wanted to give you a little project of where we're at. The first quarter of the month, um, compared to the first quarter of last year, um, where, uh, again, I'm walking in some big shoes. Kevin Deal was probably our most efficient, uh, most, um, knowledgeable veterans service officer we've had in the state of Iowa, and so I'm walking into some big shoes. But I wanted to give you a couple of statistical data points, just real quickly. We took in about nine thousand dollars in donations in the month of September. Uh, the Elk Lodge, they gave us forty-five hundred. Becker and Chapman Post, they gave us thirty-one hundred. Uh, there was some pu- public donation, uh, nominus, donor gave us fifteen hundred. John Deere's Credit Union, not John, just Credit Union, but UAW eight-three-eight gave us two hundred and fifty dollars, and then another public donation of twenty-five dollars. About ninety-four hundred dollars in total just for the month of September. So, I think that is a, uh, a huge success in the six months that I've been here. That's the largest donations that we've had from the public and from businesses. Uh, and September was a very busy month for us. As you know, we're, the Honor Flight was something that I'm gonna cherish here in the year. Now, I'm smarter about telling veterans about, um, encouraging veterans to participate in that. I've seen some things there that, uh, will stay with me for the rest of my life. Uh, we did, uh, our very first blood drive, and I thought that was very successful. We had about fifteen people participate in that. Uh, so, from a veteran's standpoint, it's giving back to the community and showing the community a veteran's care. Uh, we're gonna do it again in about February. So, about every six months, we'll, we wanna donate blood to save some person's life. Uh, we had a, a very successful annual stand-down. We had about seventy-six veterans participate in that stand-down, and, uh, so, a huge success. What I'd say is helping veterans that are in need, and, uh, we had to look for bigger, better things next year. We participated in the East High Veteran Recognition Night. Uh, I'm on the board for the Festival of Trees, so we're looking to do that in November, and, uh, so I'm working with the community to take part with the ROTC up at UNI and, and to celebrate those guys as they get their commissioning. Um, and then the last thing was the POW MIA Recognition Day. But what I wanted to bring out, just real quick, is not to be competitive in numbers. I care about veterans and serving veterans and not chasing numbers. I'm not a politician. I'm, I'm, what I call myself is a warfighter. Spending thirty years in the Navy, all I care about is serving people who, uh, made the oath of enlistment or made the oath of the office. And so, what we're looking at is, if you look at the averages, so you got two thousand nineteen, which is really twenty, and you got two thousand eighteen, um, but if you look at the averages, we're kinda competitive with veterans serving an initial visit. So, the very first one, the way you explain that is, so we have a veteran that comes in for his initial visit for the month, but that's what we, uh, take for total. But that veteran may come in two or three times that month, because a lot of times what we're seeing is, a veteran will come in and say, hey, I wanna file a claim, but they have no medical evidence. They don't have the appropriate paperwork to submit. And what we're trying to do to help streamline that process, 'cause there is a, a waiting period when you put in a claim for, uh, the VA, is we try to, uh, encourage our veterans to bring in their documentation so that when they do come in, we submit that claim. That claim is then processed within, you know, the eight to six weeks, and then they're actually getting their, uh, compensation within the first ninety days or so. And so, we're encouraging our veterans to come in with that data, and so as we continue to promote our, our office, we're gonna promote that too, so we can stop, uh, veterans coming in repetitive. But we do wanna make sure that they have all their documents before they claim, file their claim. And so, the other one that I wanted to kinda, if you go down at the bottom, you'll see, uh, we're starting to take a little toll on the veterans that are coming in that are Waterloo Pacific, Cedar Falls, and then other, uh, cities within. That's including Dunkerton and places like that within the county. Um, and you could see right now, uh, from September itself, if you go down to two thousand nineteen September, we had a hundred and one veterans come in last month, uh, that were from Waterloo, twenty-four from Cedar Falls, and forty-three from other counties, I mean, from other cities within the county. And that includes, uh, some veterans that are outside the county, 'cause we don't turn them down. Uh, so I just asked you to take a good look at the averages, and if you have any questions, please contact me, and I'll go in more in detail. Just wanted to be short and give you a quick synopsis of the first quarter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then, moving on to item five, minutes approved for October first, two thousand nineteen. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item six is our consent agenda that'll be made with a single resolution. Is there any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item seven A is a resolution statement of work between Blackhawk County and ICIT Group to perform a technology assessment, be approved, direct to chair to sign as recommended by Kim Veeder. We got an estimated cost on this?
Um, the only thing they're gonna charge are hotel rates, the hotel for those people and their food, so I don't have an estimate of that, no.
And mileage, I think.
And mileage, I'm sorry, yes. Just what it costs to get them here while they're here and feed them while they're here.
We're talking twelve people.
Um, yeah.
Well, I thought.
Twelve motel rooms, twelve, thirty-six meals a day.
Um, y- yeah, I mean, I can have them give us an estimate of what they.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, 'cause we'll probably have to have approval of that.
Okay.
Does that come out of the IT budget then, or?
Well, it's not really a budgeted item, so I guess I hadn't really, yeah, I suppose, but we might have.
James will find this by either boardroom or, um.
Yeah, board office.
Or IT. Well, we probably should have an estimate so we know what we're dealing with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, anyway, what I was gonna say is, um, in from Iowa information, Iowa Technology Information, no. Iowa, see, you say I said so many times. Iowa County's Information Technology Group has been together for fifteen, sixteen years. They've been doing these assessments since two thousand eleven. They've done it for like twenty-eight counties at the time, and there's three other counties that are in the process of having this done as well. The group and the project has been recognized by the National Association of Counties, so, I mean, it's really been a good project for our affiliate, and, um, they do a great job. And so, I think that we'll be, you know, we'll get a report that's beneficial to the county, so.
And I think they talked about the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first were the three days that they'll.
Right, those are the three days that they're gonna be here, and part of what they're gonna do is review our network and the servers and that kind of thing, look at staffing, review the budget, meet with department heads, and then, like I said, they'll have a report at the end of the group.
Probably should put out, James, a memo from the board.
Well, I was gonna go ahead if this got approved.
Asking for, um, cooperation and so forth, and what it actually is.
Okay, well, and I was planning on sending out an email as well, so they know, so.
And I think while there's twelve people maybe in that group that they listed, I think they only talked about step six or seven, eight, something like that, coming here, didn't they, Kim?
I think that was their intention for all those.
I thought it said twelve. For all twelve, okay.
What was the name of that group again?
ICIT.
There you go. Why'd we get Tom?
Isn't that funny? I've belonged to it for how many years, and, yeah.
Okay, we know it is ICIT. Okay, is there anything else, any other questions for Kim?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Uh, we'll put that out through the board. I think it'll come from the board as.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven B is a resolution, twenty eighty, agreement between Blackhawk County, Blackhawk County E nine-one-one Board to use not to exceed three million of proceeds, not to exceed nine-point-one million issuance of GO bonds. I believe we did this last week for the solid waste. We're doing it this week for the E nine-one-one.
Yeah, that's, it's really just the second half of this, um, this bond that we're gonna be issuing. Uh, last week, we did the, uh, six million for the solid waste. It's, uh, six-point-one, excuse me, for the solid waste, and it's just the three million for, uh, the E nine-one-one. So, it's really just the second half of that, so.
Board, any questions on this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item A A, a motion of deployment of James Perry, Finance Director, to the Blackhawk County Deferred Compensation Committee be approved effective eight, October the eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, is, anybody got any questions? No, James, I'm assuming you're replacing what Susan was on that?
Yep, yep, Susan was, uh, Susan was on it, uh, prior, and then it's left a vacant spot on that.
Okay, bye. Anybody else got anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a motion of travel request submitted by Deb Bunker, HR Director, be approved, direct chair to sign, one hundred seventy-eight dollars, ten, the Ayers and Cooney Annual Employment Law Climate Seminar.
So moved?
Second.
Anything on that, Deb? You're not gonna talk to him while you're there, I hope. Remember, the clock's running all the time. Okay, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is a resolution of taxes due and payable of suspended persons as indicated, special assessments, rates, charges. rates, charges, including interest fees and costs. This is under the provision of four-two-seven-point-nine of the Code of Iowa, be suspended.
I thought we were gonna move that, the post type of agreements over to the resolution agenda, but I requested that a couple weeks ago.
You mean?
They said they were gonna be moved over...
To the consent, you mean?
No, this area here, consent by resolution.
Yeah, the consent agenda, we can, if you want them.
Make it a lot easier.
It's, it's, it's routine, it falls, they meet the requirements under four-two-seven-point-nine or it wouldn't be here. So James will make sure it gets moved to the consent agenda, we have them periodically.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
And item D is a resolution, revise preferred one summary plan descriptions for Blackhawk County Health incorporating prior amendments to the plan, minor language cleanup aligns eligibility criteria to current policies, collective buying agreements for both five-hundred-seven-fifty plans be approved.
Is that moved?
Second.
Deb, you wanna talk about what we're changing, if anything?
Morning, Board, Deb Bunker, HR Director. Basically, just what it says here, we're just incorporating all of our prior amendments that we've done over the last couple of years. This aligns our eligibility with current practice and policy bargaining contracts. The only change that would be different that we, I sent you an email yesterday about that is at our annual meeting, we discussed the virtual doctor visits. We, we're not seeing much participation in that and we would really like to encourage that, it would save the plan a lot of money if people would use that. What a lot of entities are doing are reducing the co-pays for that, so we were proposing to just remove, reduce them by ten dollars each respectively.
Okay, anybody else?
What supervisor sits on this? Any supervisors on this?
This isn't a committee, this is just, this is our health plan, summary plan document we're required to have.
When you meet with the...
Oh, no, well, preferred one just comes up like once a year and does an annual review of our plan.
Weren't they here last week?
They were here last week, James was part of that and Helen. Typically, it's just been like that, but if a supervisor wants to be involved, we can certainly...
Why don't you put next time, they're only once a year?
Well, they come up more than once a year, but this is, they come up every fall.
Why don't you just slip memo to the board and see if there's any of the two that'd want to attend. Awareness.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, this is resolution, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
And last item nine, any reports or information from the board?
Just to send out our sympathy to the family of Alfonso Davis, the former employee downstairs for the Guards. And then also, this Thursday at the Grouse Museum, there's gonna be a film, an eight-millimeter film done by a Waterloo gentleman that was in Vietnam. It's well worth your time to go see, I'm forgetting what the starting, I think it's be, you know the time, Jolando?
That's the one from Hamlet?
Yeah. Yep, and there'll be snacks and other stuff and the money's raised, there's no charge, but money's raised, it's be donations go to Honor Flight and to the museum.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Ford, so the Complete Count Committee has enrolled the help of a UNI marketing class to help with creation of some of the promotional materials and they reached out to me because they're having a little trouble, they definitely know how to do and create all the marketing stuff, but they're having a little trouble coming up with the content of it and so I'm presenting their class next Tuesday, just about different ways that the census impacts our community, whether it's county operations or city. And so if folks have things that they wanna me to share with the class, you know, just get that information to me before Tuesday and I'll be asking the same of all the different department heads about ways federal funding relies and is related to the census so that they can put that into their marketing materials that they're working on.
Good.
No, thank you.
Okay, with that, accept motion to adjourn, so...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned, thank you.